It's gonna be recording.
But we can, we can start. We don't need Susan till we get further down the road. Okay. Um, so tell me when you're, uh, L M C T V, tell me when you're ready. Good. Yeah. Okay. You're all good. Okay. Good evening. Uh, this is the Village of Mamaroneck Planning Board Meeting of October 26th, two thousand and twenty-two. In attendance tonight, I don't, do I have to do attendance? I have to know who's on the screen, right? Um, the planning board is here in person along with Brittany O'Neil, the Land Use Coordinator. And on our remote, we have Teresa Backner, our Land Use Attorney, John Keller, our Consulting Engineer, and Alicia Moore, who is our Consulting Planner for AKRF. Okay. Um, the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from September 28th, 2022. There are a couple, I have a couple of corrections. On the bottom of page two, I didn't go look at the tape because this is a sentence that didn't get finished. I'm not sure we need it. Um, the set of bullets right up from the bottom, Alicia Moore's, the two affordable units aren't marking the plans, and the applicant owner needs to clarify, and there's nothing there. So I don't even know if we need that. You can just strike that. Strike that second bullet. Um, on page three, right above, uh, I am four, we have a motion of Ms. Goldstein that the board declared lead agency. I do believe that we declared our intent to be the lead agency at this meeting. We have to wait for the other interested agencies to weigh in. So its intent should be inserted there. And at the very end on page five, administrative action, this was lifted off of the minutes, cut and paste. We not only will review the revised tree law, we did review. So we just say the board reviewed, reviewed the revised tree law and Chair Sabat will mark up a copy and send it to the Board of Trustees, which happened. Uh, anybody else have any sort of comments or anything on the minutes?
No, good, good job.
No. One, one quick one. I, I think on your first comment, I think that the phrase, I think the sentence is that the applicant owner needs to be clarified, like who the applicant and owner is.
Oh.
But if we want to keep it, but.
Uh, we need, okay, we need to clarify who.
Yeah.
Who the applicant slash owner is. Okay. We changed that then. You're right. I forgot about that.
And then.
By who? Right.
And then really just for very, just wondering your guys' thoughts, but the, um, cell tower, it just goes right into the motion. I wonder if we would just put that there was a brief discussion we heard from the, you know, the applicant, something.
Yeah, well, these are, these are kind of acting.
And if, if we're.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Seeing as though we didn't really vote on it because it was just a recommendation to the board, they're the ones who were voting on it, and they're the ones who are getting the, you know, the larger presentation.
That's it for me. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted.
As amended.
Amended.
Okay, thank you. I need a second.
A second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
And I do, yes. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request from the applicant at, uh, 139 East Prospect Avenue to extend the approval for the site plan and the special permit. Um, is someone here from the applicant? We do have a, uh, we do have a letter basically stating that they request an extension of time, a year. Um, this is pretty routine for us now because of COVID and supply chain issues, a lot of other issues. A lot of people are having trouble getting started with. So they just asked for, uh, an extent, this is their, would be their first extension. We approve them. Uh, a little, a little less than. Anybody have any comments or problems? Okay, then I need a motion then to, um, approve the extension to, for 139 East Prospect until, what date are they asking for? November 12th, 2023, which is exactly a year from when they were approved.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Seamus?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes, Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an application before us from 950 dash 960 Mamaroneck Avenue. The applicant, um, it's their site plan review. They are looking to expand the parking lot of 950 into the rear yard of 960. Property is owned by the same individual, individuals. Um, we've heard the, this application before and the applicants are coming back uh, for a follow-up to, uh, questions and issues that were raised the last time they were here, which was the 14th of September.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, Paul Hono, Thorpe Nelson, for.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Um, we were here on 914.
Mic, microphone.
We need to be on TV.
Sorry, yeah. You know, Peter's gonna need a mic. There you go. Okay, dear. You can use the portable mic. Um, again, Paul Hono, Thorpe Nelson, for the applicants. We are here on 914 for the initial, uh, review. Uh, since then, we have revised the plan and submitted, based on the comments of the consultants, we have submitted a revised plan, dated October 5th, uh, and then the board has received subsequent consultant memos, uh, from Keller Sessions, AKRF, and uh, Terrabella. Uh, so I think we've addressed probably ninety-five percent of what was requested of us. Um, we did have some comments in pertaining, and starting with the Terrabella. She had suggested, um, some shrubs on the sidewalk on the west corner. We think there may, there may be, or here can show you on that, more than enough shrubs. Um, and then there was a question raised by Keller about the turning radius on one of the, you know, on, on the entranceway, which Peter, uh, Peter Gettis on our engineering address as well. And, um, you know, beyond that, we obviously like a neg deck and, uh, at some point an approval. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Peter Gettis on our engineer and then he can go through the changes for you.
And, um, we can pull up any files you have on the screen here.
Okay.
Not just for us, but for
Absolutely.
the people who are remote and for the audience.
Pull up the S D two oh four.
Speak to the revised, uh, engineering.
There should be a site plan. I'm sorry, do you mind just?
I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay. Susan, Susan on remotely?
Susan is.
Yes.
Yes.
No, wait.
Yeah.
She's.
I see her.
She's her name.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, there she is.
Okay, Susan Oakley has.
One oh two?
Uh, one oh two. Uh, so, um, as Mr. Noto indicated, we had, uh, some comments, uh, with respect to side yard, uh, buffers from parking areas and drive aisles. And one more point here or on this one.
We can't really see that.
I, I have the same problem.
Yes. And what we, we really should have some kind of a laser pointer or something, Brittany. Maybe you could help us with that. I, I thought of it after the last meeting and I forgot to tell you.
I can never see the laser on the.
Yeah, or even just a pointer like we had when I went to grammar school.
A stick works.
A stick.
We were able to, to reconfigure the parking lot in this angular, uh, format and, and provide the required setback from the property line. Uh, we were also able to address the issues with the, uh, same issue with the parking setbacks in the, uh, northwest quarter. So we, we faced out a memo. It seems like all of the AKRF comments are, uh, have been addressed. Uh, as far as, I'll save the engineering until last, but as far as the plantings, uh, I think Bradford Avenue, uh, screening, uh, in part of the new parking lot. You know, I'm happy to talk to the consultant, um, offline, but the tree, existing tree has a very large canopy and also the roots of that type of tree are surface roots. So I just want to make sure that we're not impacting that tree. Uh, but we're happy to add, you know, shrubs as, you know, requested, uh, to improve the screening there. But that is a very large canopy tree with very shallow roots visible at the surface. So I think we might be able to squeeze in some shrubs right in the, uh, in the corner. And then, um, you know, maybe, uh, to the other side of it, but I don't know that we can get a whole row of shrubs.
The large tree is the one furthest back of Bradford?
Furthest back.
Yeah.
Point.
Yeah, I can see, I think.
It's this one here and this, I can't write on that screen, but this tree is probably like that.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't get confused between two different things that sound very similar. And one is a tree protection plan, which is what you're talking about. I think with the large drip, you know, with the large diameter of a drip line to preserve the existing tree and work carefully around it, which Susan can tell us if that's possible or how to do that. The other thing that may be missing and we'll get to it is the tree preservation plan, which would also apply to a tree that's already existing on the site. And then if, you know, more shrubs can be filled in around it, that's great, but, but let's start with, you know, tree protection and tree preservation.
Right now, we, we do want us to, of course, show the tree protection around, right, the trees to remain. One of the comments was to measure the canopies and show the actual canopy, which we're happy to do. We'll issue revise of, of plans for all the trees. Um, and in the process of doing that, we will identify where we could place additional shrubs.
Okay.
For this.
Susan, we'll get to you after they do their presentation. We'll go down the list of the consultants so you guys can respond to it. But just note for the record that Susan did a comment to the board that perhaps additional, um, shrubs could be, um, added to the screening along Bradford for the parking, for the, uh, people on Bradford. So it, it is confusing, the preservation plan and the protection plan, um, but I think we're dealing with both issues here. Okay.
Um, so I guess the last outstanding item is the engineering comments. Uh, me and Mr. Keller have had a conversation, uh, this afternoon. Uh, we do have to tweak, uh, the plans a little bit, the model, uh, the model works. It's just some separation issues, uh, that we can revise and, and, um, you know, get back to him for his review. I don't think there's anything, and I'll let Mr. Keller speak for himself, but I don't think there is anything in the comments that are insurmountable, uh, as far as addressing technical, uh, people.
That's the separation between the filtration system and the impervious surface. Is that what you were referring to?
Uh, so, no, it's, um, it's the depth of the test pit below the, the underground filtration units. There's a minimum depth of, uh,
Three feet, yeah.
So we might just have to use a shallower, um, call tech. I mean, there's no groundwater. We just didn't, or rock. We just didn't dig that deep. We, we had a different, uh, solution in mind when we were doing the testing and, and the same thing with the infiltration testing. So that infiltration testing has to be below the, uh, below the units and we're in the bottom third of the units. But again, if we use a, a shallower unit, we, you know, will be able to.
Shallower and wider, like saying, is it will be the same amount of storage or?
The same size.
Yeah.
So instead of having five, you might have ten
Okay.
right next to each other. So it might be a bigger array. Um, in any event, what we've done is we've designed it and will continue to use this assumption to capture the hundred-year storm.
And that's what I was getting at, whether you'll still, that statement will still be true.
That statement will still be true.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know, there's still some outstanding issues with regards to the engineering and with regards to the trees and possibly shrubs and landscaping, but nothing that you find onerous, um, and not, as you put it, insurmountable. Okay, uh, finished and presenting to.
I'm, I'm finished presenting, yes.
Okay, so let's go through, uh, to make sure that, um, our consultants agree with you. Although it seems from their memos that they do, but let's, uh, just go through. Alicia, do you have anything from AKRF to, um, to state?
Uh, well, an hour. Sorry?
We have a memo, something dated on, uh, October 28th.
Right, so our comments have been addressed. The only remaining issue is that the intent letter is still out. It's on, um, the B A R's agenda for November 1st.
Okay. So we can't declare our sales need agency until after we get back from the other interested parties.
Yes.
Even though it's been more than thirty days.
I, I don't, I think, uh, there was a mix-up on our part and didn't go out on time.
Right, so they haven't had it for thirty days.
They haven't had it for thirty days, right, right.
I actually had a question on the AKRF memo, Alicia.
Yes.
Can you, I think I understand your first comment. The response is talking about a decrease of point oh three acres of, from the original plan on impervious surface. But the numbers there, so I'm guessing that one of those numbers, either point four eight or point five seven, neither one of those is the original plan percentage acreage, is that right? So because there's more than a point oh three difference between point four eight and point five seven. So, okay, so the, the point oh three is from the original plan, which number is not reflected in here, is that right?
Yes.
So that was just a little unclear. And then I think that, um, the comment number three.
Yes.
Which says, you know, the applicant should, should submit a tree preservation plan. I don't believe the comment was actually addressed. They've provided a tree protection plan, but at least Susan Oakley's memo says that we still need the tree preservation plan. So maybe we can change that comment to reflect the, actually what we have and.
Yeah. I guess, I guess I'm still getting mixed up on the protection and preservation, but yes, of course I can correct that and revise one out.
Join the club.
We're not alone. It's a common, it's a common thing. But we're trying to keep it clean, clear. Tree preservation plan is with regards to the new tree law. The protection plan is with regards to construction. Okay. Okay. Anything else on AKRF?
Oh, one, one thing, I think. This is as good a time as any. I, I don't think the C A F is signed, so maybe we could get it, or the, um, the, yeah, yeah, it's signed, it's signed.
Oh, it's not signed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, we need a revision.
Right, yeah.
Your, your comment.
Yeah, I saw the new version and then it's, you know, it looks like it's just typewritten, but not inside it.
So if you can just resubmit a signed copy.
Yeah. Uh, the owner's not here tonight or? You can sign it.
Oh, the, the one other thing, which is in our memo, but just to say it aloud, is that notification was sent to the county and we did receive a confirmation of receipt.
Okay.
On the twentieth.
All right, so by next week, we should have, uh, lead agency for the next, for the next meeting. We all can set your paperwork together. Um, John?
Hi, good evening.
Sessions, how, how are we doing here with you guys?
I, I, I like the revisions with the one-way, uh, uh, drive aisle and the angled parking. Uh, every, it actually, yeah, they actually fit less cars in that area, but they picked up three additional spaces in the existing paved area by the, uh, the refuge, uh, uh, pad in the back of the site. Uh, the only issues I had with the, with the parking arrangement was as you, as you drive into that rear parking lot from Mamaroneck Avenue, uh, you have to make a left-hand turn, uh, at the parking lot to get into it. Uh, I was just concerned with the most northern angle parking space, whether it was going to provide sufficient room for a vehicle to make that turn. So I had asked, uh, the applicant's engineer to, uh, provide turning radius geometry on the plan to show that, uh, when a, when a car is in that last space, uh, a vehicle turning into the driveway can, can easily make that turn. Uh, the two northern parking spaces also, um, it appears that the first, the most northern space, the first space you'll reach, uh, you're not going to be able to make a swing and go directly into the space. It'll probably require a, a three-point turn there, uh, where you would have to back up and then go into the space. Uh, so I, I also asked the applicant's engineer to show that on a plan so the board can consider that when, when looking at the parking spaces.
Yes.
We really.
Can I draw it here?
Um, uh, L M C T V, do you have his, his board on screen? Yeah, I don't. It's over there too, you know. Yeah, you can't draw it. Yeah, please don't, right.
Put on the edge here, but, uh, uh, Mr. Keller is referring to these two spaces. Uh, a typical passenger car has a turning radius, uh, minimum radius of about nine feet. Uh, so anything tighter than that, it can't really, uh, do. But, uh, we, we do have auto turn software to show the movements, but the concern is for this space, when you come in here, this will have to be a three-point turn to get into that space. We don't know if that's the case for the second, uh, space. Perhaps me and Mr. Keller could take bets on that one, but, but, uh, I'm optimistic that the second space will work, uh, with just a regular pull-in, but, um, whether it doesn't, doesn't one or two of these spaces may require, uh, three-point maneuver. In this area here, we do have twenty-four feet, so that is, um, you know, for, for angle parking, the drive aisles are last because you don't need as much, but in these two spaces, we do have twenty-four feet, so there's ample room for a car to back up and pull in.
They won't, they won't back out onto Mamaroneck Avenue.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna need down here.
Yeah, and that's.
After you come in.
And that's just the side.
Right, this is the rear. So, um, they're coming out the side yard. They made this left.
Right.
And whether, they definitely can't pull into this one
Right.
without a three-point maneuver.
But it's not a problem.
And possibly the second.
Any avenue or any traffic or any, you know, it's the driveway.
Far away. Those could also be, if the board wanted to designate it as employee spaces or something.
So the, and that was clear, so, but I was, I had a different concept. The idea, the issue is not that if somebody is in parked in that furthest spot, that it's difficult to get in. It's only the parking into that first spot or two. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. Like if someone's parked in the very last spot, the rest of, yeah.
Also, with the car doing this, because Mr. Keller and I discussed this at last, and he just wanted to make sure that we could demonstrate your point that a car coming in can make this left-hand turn.
If, if someone's parked in this spot.
Use some, um, uh, a little bit of striping up here, kind of to visually guide the cars a little bit better. But yeah, we'll show the turning movements, uh, for, for this area.
Thank you, John. Um, is that it on the parking then?
Uh, yes, that was it on the parking.
What about the, I'm sorry, excuse me, number two, talking about, um, provisions to ensure vehicles with angled spaces will not overhang the sidewalk or opposing spaces?
Exactly. I missed that. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's in your memo. You just.
Yes. Thought I was done.
No.
I, I thought there was a sidewalk proposed behind the building, but, uh, in the discussion with Peter this afternoon, he indicated that there is not a sidewalk behind the building. So I, I had issue with the, with the angled parking spaces overhanging the sidewalk and losing the width of the sidewalk. But he informed me that it's, it's a landscape bed and not a, uh, a sidewalk. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There's no doors on the, uh, this side of the building.
But where, but where the angled spaces oppose the straightened spaces on the opposite side, I was also so concerned that, uh, the angled spaces could overhang the, the, uh, the ninety-degree spaces opposed.
I think the other side completely, yeah.
As you drive down the aisle further to the south on the property, further, you know, the spaces that are further into the parking lot.
But we have bumper blocks on the ninety-degree, um, spaces. We could provide bumper blocks on these one, two, three, four, um.
That, that could, that could resolve it, either, uh, the blocks or, uh, posts so that they could just pull in, you know, to the, to the front of the spot. Whatever you prefer, but we just need something to, to prevent that from occurring.
Not a problem.
And the stormwater, uh, issue, the, the, the applicant has, uh, increased the number of drywells on the site to, uh, five drywells, and they've provided a grass channel for pretreatment in the rear lawn area. Uh, the stormwater calculations indicate that, uh, there will be no discharge from the stormwater system, which is collecting all the new impervious surface. For all storms up to the hundred-year event. I, I had a few comments on the design. I thought the system design was, was well-done. Uh, however, there were some details. Uh, one, one I requested that a, a detail be provided of the, of the drywall systems themselves, uh, to show the three-foot separation, uh, correct the discrepancy in the elevations of the, on the drawings and to show the, uh, the access to these drainage units. There was no detail on the plans regarding, uh, uh, manhole covers or how these units would be accessed. Um, on regarding the pretreatment channel, the intent with the pretreatment channel is so that we would have a surface runoff from the parking lot across the lawn area, which would, uh, discharge into the grass channel. The flow, once it built to a certain elevation, be, would be piped back into the drywall units. Uh, there is an emergency overflow intended. Uh, that would be an, if, if the system failed, or you would have a storm event greater than a hundred-year. Uh, and the, and the water would flow over the lawn area to Bradford Avenue. I asked the applicant to provide some additional detail on the grass swell, showing the length, width, and depth, and confirming that the, the volume required for pretreatment is met within the channel, but to also provide elevations to assure that if, if the system ever overflowed, it would be directed to Bradford Avenue and not to the neighboring residential property to the west.
And what about first, I'm sorry?
Okay, I also requested that they provide some additional proposed, uh, spot grades within the parking lot to, to assure us that they had adequate pitch, uh, from the parking lot into the grass swell.
And then number six, I'm sorry, Mr. Keller, sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm still on number three.
Okay. Okay.
He was on number three G.
Uh, yeah, the, the, the applicant performed an infiltration test, but it was performed at a depth that was not at the bottom of the proposed facility. The drywall, the drywall should actually be, uh, the shallower unit of, above where the percolation test was, was performed or, uh, additional tests should be performed, uh, much deeper than what was performed in the, uh, in the study that was provided. I also believe, uh, that the pretreatment volume required. I also believe uh, that the pretreatment volume requirements are, are a hundred percent of the water quality volume, I believe uh, the applicant has provided a, a volume of fifty percent. Uh, so they probably need a swell twice the size of what is shown on the plan. And I just asked the, the applicant, there was no, no, there wasn't sufficient detail in the, in the calculations to show that the infiltration uh, calculation performed was through infiltration, was through the bottom of the proposed structures, and it did not consider the, the sides of the structures. So I asked the applicant to, to provide that, that information. And number, getting number six, uh, I, we, I think we need some clarification on the signage. It appears that there was some existing uh, no right turn and uh, do not enter signs. Uh, it appeared that uh, some one-way signs would be required in a, in a stop sign at Bradford Avenue. My conversation with Peter this afternoon, he indicated that he thought the signage on the plan was not uh, up to date, and that uh, he would make those modifications.
I guess with respect to the signage, so the board could see it. Uh, there is an existing sign here, that's a stop sign. Uh, it's very long, it's a stop sign, and it's also a no left turn underneath it. Uh, the other side of it is a do not enter, do not enter here, do not enter there, so we'll label those uh, accordingly. Uh, one of the plans said, oh, it's this, uh, existing stop sign or existing. But we'll label them according to the legend, but also these signs here at this new island, uh, those should be one-way, we, those were uh, uh, labeled incorrect, incorrectly, but we don't want uh, a vehicle coming in from here to be able to uh, to go up that uh, roadway, so, so this is a typo on these two, and we'll clarify uh, the other signs, but again, there's do not enter, existing, do not enter, there's an existing stop sign and uh, no right turn.
So, so the northern building and the new rear parking lot would be accessed from Mamaroneck Avenue through the northern curb cut. That would be the uh, the uh, egress to the property. Uh, no, the ingress and the egress would be through Bradford Avenue. Uh, restricted left turn only back to Mamaroneck Avenue. The southern building uh, would ha- have its ingress uh, from Mamaroneck Avenue on the southern entrance on Mamaroneck Avenue, and it's, it's the egress uh, to Bradford also. You cannot access the rear parking lot from the southern entrance, you would have to go back out onto Mamaroneck Avenue and come back in on the north entrance. Just so everyone understands, so the entrances are on Mamaroneck and the exit is on Bradford.
So if somebody turned directly into the southern building and those spaces weren't available, they'd have to go back out on Bradford, go around and grab.
Yes.
My opinion.
Oh, what do I? Depends on the time of day, but what else are you gonna do?
Depends on the time of day and whether school is being let out or, or if school drop off or pick up. Okay, thank you, thanks.
You're welcome.
Susan, uh, Oakley from Terravella Landscaping, um, I'm sure we have your memo also dated uh, October twentieth. Um, now, we, we don't have a written tree preservation plan, is that correct?
There is currently no separate tree preservation plan, and if I may, I'd like to clarify the difference between a tree protection detail and the tree preservation plan. A tree protection detail is just that, it indicates where the protection should be around a tree, and then on the construction documents and the tree preservation plan, the, the appropriately sized um, circle around each tree, depending on the size of the actual canopy, will reflect the tree protection detail, so there is no tree protection plan. It's a detail, and then it shows how it's implemented on the construction plans and on the tree preservation plan.
So it's part of the site plan? Not construction drawings?
It should be on the construction drawings also.
Construction drawings and the construction drawings on the planning, so I want, I want to clarify my own hand for this and hopefully future applications.
So the contractor sees where the area of protection is.
Right, so but on the site plan, it could be the trees that are going to be protected, right? Identified, and then.
We need the trees that are going to be removed.
Yeah, that.
The trees are going to be, that are going to be, remain, and then the calculation of if we're rema- if we're removing X number of trees, we need Y number to be planted. That's the tree preservation.
Preservation plan, I'm thinking back on the.
You're still on the protection plan.
Cause I'm just thinking.
Well, normally we see.
Part of the site plan, or is that part of the construction drawing?
Normally, we do see addendum two plans that are submitted, you know, like, there'll be tree protection detail that'll be attached to plans like this, where they'll have each tree and what's going, you know.
It's sort of on what level of detail you need for a site plan. We could measure the canopy to show those more accurately and provide a separate uh, tree preservation plan. I do have a question maybe, since we're talking about clarification in the top right corner.
Mm-hmm.
I'm getting a lot of exercise today, but I need it, uh. In this corner, we are removing a couple of trees, it's probably on another sheet, but those, those trees are pretty much dead, inundated with, with weeds and, and uh, the only reason we're, we're moving them is because they're in, you know, pretty bad health, so is that, I assume those are not trees that we have to make up for uh, with new plant.
If it's on the site, they do.
If it's on the site.
Yes. If, if, if it's within, if it's within your site.
Doesn't.
You're obligated.
Take down a dead tree? That's a hazard, then you have.
To replace it, right.
Okay.
At one point, at, at some point in time, it had a canopy and it was, and it was uh, um, capturing carbon, and that's what we're trying to get at, and sh- and providing shade, um, so.
And just in that situation, specifically this situation you have, I believe those are.
Well, they're not.
That's not a tree.
An arboidae is not a tree, it's, doesn't have limbs, it's a shrub.
The screening that we uh, put there to replace the dead tree is not appropriate.
If it's an arboidae, then you're ta- that is dead, it's not a tree. If you're.
It's not an arboidae.
Okay, it's a tree, it's a deciduous tree.
Right.
Okay, no, you need to, you need to replace that tree, it doesn't have to be in that particular spot, but it has to be somewhere.
Or that particular size, it could be fairly substantial, but you don't.
It depends, it also depends on the size of the tree. You know, if it's a, if it's a small tree below a certain caliber, and Susan probably has these numbers memorized, I don't, um, it, you don't, it doesn't require, the law doesn't require replacement for it.
And what if it's a landscape tree? Like, you know, not, not a maple or oak or.
Not a native tree?
Not a native tree, uh.
We, we are trying to replace things with native trees, especially uh, given climate change.
What is, if it's a non-native tree, is that?
If it's a non-native tree that's coming out?
That's coming out.
Then you replace it with a native tree, yes, it's still a tree. There's non-native trees all over the place, but one of these days, it just gets to everyone, no, it will never get to everyone.
I, I also suggested that, I mean, they have three trees um, proposed, but they're all dogwood trees. So they, they don't really fit the bill for a large canopy tree that will reduce the heat effect, heat island effect, and create shade, they're small ornamental trees. So, which is fine, but there are other areas that I indicated on, in my September ninth memo, there's multiple other places where large canopy trees would be very happy.
So those were both, I, I think, if I'm looking at this, um, it was both on Bradford and on Mamaroneck Avenue, Susan?
Right.
It's more Mamaroneck Avenue where I think it would be most beneficial.
Yeah, a, a, on the streets, kid, I'm right there on the avenue.
I, I think he said he's gonna. You got me, okay, gotcha. All right, so one of the areas was here, this is a landscaped island, it's not that big of a, a space, and it's not that far from the one-story Domino's building, so you know, we, we strategically placed a decorative tree there, we, we thought that a larger tree would, you know, kind of be too heavy against that and too close to the building. The other area is here, which is actually an existing parking space. So this is a, an area where, you know, people pull in and that, that is a parking space. So, I'm not sure that, you know, we've supplemented some of the uh, shrubs that are here, which again, we know they're not trees, um, but we've supplemented um, the shrubs, but you know, we don't want to lose that parking space, it's a small site. Um, so we just want to, you know, find the balance. Can we scroll back the other way, I'm sorry? Uh, I think you know, from our previous discussion, there's probably opportunity in the back to uh, have some larger canopy trees. Uh, but, you know, we're willing to put them where it, where it makes sense.
Right.
Uh, this streetscape on Bradford, they're all apple, they're all small trees, so we were trying to, you know, kind of stay with that uh, with that kind of uh, imagery, there, with the same concept and not change it up too much. But I do agree that there's probably a few spaces that can, you know, we could get uh, some larger canopy trees.
Well, Susan, were you talking about tree on Mamaroneck Avenue, let's talk about that. Were you talking about trees on the applicant's property, or maybe in the right-of-way, is there a grassy right-of-way before the sidewalk or after the side? It's all, is it all solidly paved?
It's, there, I think there's a very narrow median there, a gra- grass strip there. Um, and, and if you look again at my September ninth memo, it showed photos of um, the block going towards ninety-five, where there's um, uh, very well-placed, medium-sized trees that do not block the businesses, and they accent, and, and they benefit everyone um, in a, in a way that they're on the business side of the sidewalk.
Okay.
If that clarifies, so that was my intention to follow that theme on the next block with this property as a suggestion.
And you pointed out there were really, there was no problem with overhead wires?
Yes.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, well, these are.
Take a look at it again, I mean, you can reach out to Susan, um, and Susan, I'm sure, you know, would be able to explain it more, or even meet you at the site if that's appropriate, um, to, to settle, yeah, you see the photographs there from ten sixty, uh, tens forty and ten twenty Mamaroneck Avenue, and what they were able to accomplish when they uh, did some renovations, Calico Corner's been there for a long time. Harbor Plumbing, they have had some renovations in the last decade. Okay, all right, so those are still issues that we're looking then for, for um, closure with, um. Okay. All right. See, where are we? Okay, and we're gonna wait on C P R. Um, okay, does anybody from the board have any other comments or questions or anything to bring up, or any clarification needed on anything we've heard here tonight?
I'd just really briefly like to point out, I think right from the start, you said more stormwater protection than needed, and it seems like a great plan, so a hundred-year storm retained is great, it's like, this is near the Mamaroneck River downtown, a lot of new pavements, that looks good, so I think there are a few Keller session comments to resolve, you know, the hope is common address, right, the next time around, but it'd be great to see the same level of kind of stormwater protection preserved as you address those comments.
We will not take away.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Okay.
Good.
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, absolutely. Okay, so uh, we have our marching orders, we will resubmit, I know you have to wait on C P R, so uh, we will, we will resubmit revised plans, hopefully.
And we have.
Very soon.
We don't have a second meeting in November because it's Thanksgiving.
All right, so.
So we have, and, and today was the deadline for additional material, but.
Looking around, the first meeting in September.
If, if that's okay with you.
Yes, I'm, we, we have much of our choice, yeah, it's okay with us.
I mean, unless you can get things into us quickly.
Well, we're gonna do our best to get it, yes, so, uh, that's our MO, but anyway, thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Uh, nine hundred Rushmore Avenue, which, for those of you who don't recognize the address, is Beach Point Club.
And as I am recused on that application, I'm going home.
Good night and God bless. You can move over if you want.
Okay.
Okay, um. All right. We, we haven't seen you all in a while uh, since, since July. So, welcome back, we understand you were granted consistency by the uh, H C Z M while you were away. Um, and I I won't say anything else. Um, okay, so um, we had materials submitted uh, to H C Z M that we then saw, and comments from our consultants and things. Um, so why don't you sort of fill us in on what's happened in the last two and a half months?
Absolutely.
Actually.
So for record, my name is Catherine Gallagher, I'm with Insight Engineering Survey and Mammatic Architecture, and granted by the applicant, ring group of Beach Point Club. Um, as mentioned, since the last time we were uh, in front of the planning board, we have gone and presented to Harvard and Post of Loan Management Commission, they granted a, an approval or a, a, of um, consistency, it's termination of consistency, and so tonight, we are here to present the most up-to-date plans to the planning board, as well as to address the comments that we've heard both from the planning board. Um, if we want to start with T P one, which is the tree preservation plan, and we'll eventually roll in that, just as a friendly reminder for these drawings, north is to the bottom left-hand side of the sheet, Rushmore Avenue is on the left, um, Leaker Avenue is at the bottom of the sheet, Milton Avenue is to the right, and Boondale Avenue is to the top of the sheet. We have been focusing on um, two major items since the last time we were in front of the board, one is the tree preservation plan and the layout landscaping plan, the second is the stormwater management practices for the project. On the tree protection, tree preservation plan, we added the tree protection detail, which is located on the right side of the sheet, there's also a chart above that, which is a description of all of the trees within the vicinity of the area, which also includes the condition of each tree. If we want to move next to S P one, which is the layout in the landscaping plan. The layout on the landscaping plan has been updated to include native flood tolerant species, it should be noted, we are still proposing to keep on the existing, there's hydrangeas existing on site, and we are proposing to replant those in an effort for sustainability. In accordance with the tree replacement calculations, we are proposing ten trees um, to be included as part of the tree replacement, seven of those is located within this vicinity. Uh, Beach Point Club owns uh, two parcels of land, one is on the north side of Rushmore, one is on the south. This project is on the south side, however, there's a lot of recreational facilities, um, some space constraints, and so seven of those trees are proposed here, we are proposing. And so seven of those trees are proposed here. We are proposed within the Beach Point property, but not necessarily within this. View port that you're seeing on these drawings. The purpose of that is a Beach Point Club does a tree. Planting every single spring they have for the last several years. We want to include these three trees in that. What happens is during the spring after the winter, where there's been some potential storm damage or things like that. And they've had a chance to assess the needs of the club, they will then decide exactly where the trees are going to go to make the most sense for the holistic. Property. Uh, most applicants I work with do not necessarily have a very good team in place to do that. Um, one of the reasons I like working with golf and country clubs is they do. Um, so Beach Point does, has an arborist who actually helped assist with the tree preservation plan. They have a landscape architect that has been working with them for years and they have a very good understanding of the site. The other area of focus was the stormwater management practices. Um, since our last submission, and we can go to this grading utilities plan, which is SP two. Uh, the two main stormwater treatment practices continue to remain the same. There is previous pavement that's located within the parking lot. Um, and then there's an underground infiltration practice that's located to the left of the building. What has changed since the last time we were in front of you is both of those practice has increased in size. The square footage of the previous pavement has gotten larger and the call tech system has been expanded from a twelve-unit system. To a sixteen-unit system in order to provide additional mitigation. The village code is written in a way that it mimics the state code, so we have about. Point eight-seven acres of disturbance on this project. At the last meeting, we have all previously talked about that there's a gangway. Um, improvement project that's located on another portion of the site, that's about point zero-three acres, which adds to point nine acres. So we're still under that one acre threshold. However, there was a comment that was previously made about, can we design it in a way? As if it is meeting the one acre threshold, we were able to do that. And in addition to that, we have slightly increased that, um, just because of the sensitivity of the area. We are located in an AE twelve zone, um, and we understand that sensitivity. John Keller can speak to this in a little more detail, but since HCZM goes Kelly Sessions' office, our office, and Village Engineer. All the correspondence. The village is requesting that we make a connection from the infiltration system. That we talked about, which is located to the left of the building, to the catch basin that's located on Leaker Avenue, which is on the bottom of the sheet. If we want to scroll down a little bit. That is a very long run. One of the reasons we did not want to originally do that is there's a row of white pines that are located along that entire area. And we believe that there will be some incidental infiltration that occurs as the plan is currently how it shows outlets. However, we did take a second look at that area. I do believe that if we keep the piping close to the tennis courts. We'll be able to keep all of those trees intact. Um, Beach Point is, uh, wants to be a good neighbor. Um, they are prominent members of the community. It's been raining the last couple days and it's easy to see why there is concern at that intersection. Um, and therefore they have agreed to, to make those improvements. There was also a question related to testing on the project. We do have the testing results that are located on the bottom of the sheet. On a signed drawings. Um, we went back, talked to our engineer that was testing on site. Uh, the question was related to I two. Um, the percolation test was run at a depth of fifty-four inches, not thirty-four inches. So it was really just a typo that was on the drawings. Um, also twelve inches above the witnessed groundwater elevation. The testing hole being dug at the existing twelve point two means that the infiltration test was run at elevation seven point seven. Which is twenty-four inches below the bottom of the proposed stormwater infiltration practice at nine point seven. A lot of numbers, but we were in compliance with the NYSD EC Stormwater Design Manual. And we will make that change on, on the drawings and can provide any additional information to John Hill's office to, to support that endeavor. The final item I just want to point out, which was something we worked with with HCZM, is. Left of the building, there is now a small retaining wall. It was originally a retaining wall by the parking spaces, but we've extended that a little further. And that was because, again, uh, we are in an AE twelve zone. That twelve contour runs right in the corner of that area. And so we made sure that we are avoiding any fill within this flood plain, so anything at elevation twelve. Or lower than elevation twelve, um, in that space. And so we were able to do that by adding the wall into the area. Um, that, uh, now that we have a zero net cut fill, we did take that cut fill calculation off of the drawing. Which was more related to the entirety of the site. Um, there were some questions related to that. We are happy to put that back on the drawings. As it relates to concerns of the planning board, um, it's gonna be about a hundred cubic yards of import and fill. Um, questions we typically get is how truck traffic and things like that, it will be very minimal truck traffic for that small. Of an import of four yards. And that concludes my technical presentation of the things that have changed since the last time we have seen you, and I'm happy to take any questions from both.
We'll be here for the consultants before we ask questions. Okay, well, um, we'll throw it to our consultants and, and we have the discussion. Okay, um, Alicia AKR, we have a memo from you dated the twenty-first. Want to just point out anything? I think that, uh, everything is pretty much addressed.
Yes, all of our comments have been addressed.
So, you know, the open issues then from our, from a planning side.
Nope.
Okay, John, uh, I think you, you probably have the most to say here.
We, we were down to the last few comments. Uh, obviously, as, as the applicant's engineer commented, uh, we wanted the cut and fill, uh, numbers back on the plan. Just so the board understands the, the amount of truck traffic that may occur, which as, as the engineer mentioned, is, is not significant. We needed the percolation test information corrected on the depth of that test. And the third, uh, point, which was really the major point, uh. Was actually a condition in the, uh, the Harbor Coastal. Uh, approval, uh, was ju- just what we should do with the stormwater discharging from the northern portion of the parking lot. And the applicant has expanded that infiltration system. I, I believe the one-year storm is completely. Contained in the infiltration system. You may get a minor, uh, flow from, uh, the one catch basin in the parking lot after the, uh. Should the, should the flow towards that, that inlet, not all infiltrate. You may get some discharge during that one-year storm event, so probably ninety percent of your rainfall events, we won't have much of a discharge from the pipe. But we all agreed to, uh, reach out to DPW and the village engineer. Um, and based on their experience and, uh, information with that intersection. Um, at Leaker and, uh, Rushmore, uh, whether. They were gonna be satisfied with, uh, surface discharge along Rushmore. And they requested that the applicant pipe the flow to, uh, Leaker. Uh, with a new twelve-inch pipe under, uh, Leaker Avenue. Uh, with, the applicant also will address the, the present inlet, which has some restricted capacity. Uh, and an existing swell, um, on Leaker, which pretty much lost its shape and its capacity. And they'll regrade that area. And that was the, the discussion in the last couple of days on that subject matter. And I believe the, the applicant has agreed to it all.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, and then there were still some outstanding issues with regards to the trees. Susan, do you want to cover that for us?
Um, yes, everything looks like it's in pretty good shape, except for the fact that there are three trees. Required trees that have not been cited.
Right.
Um, I think that if, I think that we should move forward on requiring a. Location for them, um, and if that means that the plan needs to be expanded to include where these. I, I just think due to the new tree law, we're requiring these new tree plantings and we should. Uh, make sure that they have a place and that they are in place, because once compliance needs to be followed, if the trees aren't there, then they won't be in compliance.
And you just explained that you wanted to add those three trees to your larger.
Well, we can, we can look at it now. We're happy to look at it now. The only thing I would just ask for clarification for is I just want to make sure. Like a, an additional figure with an aerial and maybe just pictures of the location sufficient, that it's not. You know, this is the same plan that is surveyed and, you know, obviously there's a lot of detail that goes into it. If we're doing it not within this area, are we.
Right, there's a separate.
Are we able to do a figure with an aerial and.
I, I don't know what, exactly what the law says, uh, cause quite frankly, the law, um, does require that they be. On the property, but since it's your property, you just have more than one parcel. Um, this is kind of a unique situation. Teresa, do you have an opinion about this?
Uh, yeah, I, I do have an opinion about this. The, um, there is a requirement to do an asphalt plan. Um, which, which helps to make, because what happens, probably not with this applicant, but which happens with a lot of applicants. Is they adjust what they do during the course of the construction. And we're trying to get a handle on that so that doesn't happen. So we need enough detail in your plan showing where the additional three trees will be. That it can actually be enforced. So. You know, it, so I can't say that the tree locations have to be surveyed, but. Uh, you would at least have to mark them with GPS and what, which would then enable us to verify that. They have been planted and that, you know, they've been planted at the locations you said you were gonna plant them at.
I think we understand the constraints, and I think it's also dependent upon where they end up going. If it's at a location where there's easy markers to take measurements from, like. Building, that's completely different than putting them to a pit.
And, and when you come to the point where you're looking to get your certificate of occupancy and someone from the building department is going out and. Reviewing what was done versus what was approved. Those three trees should be able to be found and pointed out, you know, and, and look like they were just planted and not trees that have been there. Right, okay, alright, um, okay.
And I just, I just had a quick question for Susan. Susan, does the tree preservation plan? Um, so it's not just the landscaping plan that doesn't show all the trees to be planted. The tree preservation plan also doesn't show them. Is that correct?
I'm unclear about what you're asking. What do you mean doesn't show them?
Okay.
It shows that there are three trees. It doesn't show where they're going.
Okay, alright, that answers my question.
It, it's just a little, it's a note under the tree, the, the tree schedule. It's just a little note.
Okay.
They're gonna put them somewhere else.
Yeah, because they're not on this particular tax parcel.
Right.
Right, so it'll have to say, the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan and tree preservation plan, right?
Um, you're talking about the resolution?
Yeah.
You're getting ahead of us. You're getting a little ahead of us.
I just, I don't want to miss it, you know?
That, no, uh, right, but, but, you know, we have to, we have to, yes, prior to the issuance of a building permit, did you all see the resolution?
We did see a draft version of it. Uh, I just want clarification. We don't actually show the proposed trees on the tree preservation plan. Because we're showing, right, the preservation of the trees on the existing conditions.
Right.
So I'm happy to resubmit the tree preservation plan, but there's actually nothing that's.
Somewhere on the site planner, the trees you're planting.
Been on the layout.
Right, they're on the layout plan. But they're not necessarily in the tree preservation. So I think the tree preservation plan has the information we need. It's the layout plan. So you need another document of the other tax parcel with the approximate location.
Or an updated version of this if we choose to put it on this parcel.
Yep. Right. That's the tree, please, we'll come after you. It is, I mean, it is, it has been a problem. If, if, believe it or not, you know, it has been a problem where people just completely ignore what they dream to. And just do whatever they want. So, we're dealing with it. Okay, okay, anybody from the planning board have any, you're shaking heads?
Yeah.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of things that I'd like to just confirm. So, John Keller, do you agree that the design system would be compliant for one acre of disturbance?
Yes, I don't, I'm not sure what would change from the present design once you're over one acre.
Uh, well, I thought that was a threshold at which a different level of stormwater treatment was required.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't believe it's, it changes the design, it's just the filing procedures.
The, my understanding is the Village of Mamaroneck Code Forest local stormwater actually limits the state code. As if you're going over one acre. So in other municipalities, the design would be different if your local code didn't have as. Uh, conservative measures for stormwater regulations.
Okay, so, but your comment from earlier, because process doesn't matter, but what gets installed. So if this, if this was a one acre disturbance, which is close to, and made the point, you know, critical area.
Yeah.
This would be the same proposed design.
Yes.
And I guess.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, alright, got you, thank you. Um, and then just to be very clear, because there's a typo, I think, on like the stamped document. Is the, and I guess it's a question for you too, John, but, um, the, the test, the, um, percolation. Or, or the, the trench test, percolation test, yeah, so. That, in all elements of that test, the depth that it goes to, the way that it was performed, is all correctly done. And it, and so there's no need for any caveats related to that.
The applicant states that they've, uh, performed the test in compliance with Appendix D of this state stormwater manual. And, uh, the depth of that test is, is two feet below the bottom of the treatment system. So they've satisfied the design manual requirements, yes.
And so my request to that is, there is a caveat in the draft resolution to reperform that test. Um, if there's any way to change that wording, just so that we provide information to John Hill's office. To their sufficiency that it was a typo performed correctly. Yes, and we are happy to do that. I, I just don't want to be put into a situation where they have to be.
But is there anything unknown or discretionary about that? Does, does John's office have all of the information and it just needs to be stamped?
The typo just.
Okay, and so, John, you agree with that in that you're not gonna assess this test, you're just going to confirm that. The details that you have today are true, right?
Correct, the applicant is, is the one that's attesting to their performing the test properly.
Right, and.
You know, we don't go out and check them.
And, and but just to be crystal clear, no new information is gonna be provided with that. It's just going to be verified, signed, you know that, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's clear.
But it's the confirmation that the depth of the test was performed at fif- I believe it was fifty-four inches and not thirty-six.
It would, exactly, clear, okay. Um, and then, uh, we don't have the HCZM resolution, I don't think. Uh, were there conditions?
That was mentioned, my understanding is that they, they discussed potentially putting the condition of the work with DPW. Um, but then they decided not to do that, to the point where actually one member abstained. Um, but then they decided not to do that, to the point where actually one member abstained from voting because she believed that it should have been put as a condition. So my understanding is they knew we were coming back to planning board.
Okay.
We had told them that we would address this and, you know, John's obviously a, a continuous consultant from one board to the other. And that we would make sure that we would do the recommendations by the village.
Okay, so that, that's an important just.
They're not putting it as a condition.
That's important for us, I think, because. Exactly, but there's no place else to look for that, right? It's gonna be.
But we normally, we normally have something in our resolutions about HC, you know, HCZM and consistency and just some boilerplate language that didn't make it into this one because I think we did this so quickly to try to get you on tonight. So, um, I don't know, Teresa, uh, I think when they go to HCZM, we usually have like a, you know, like a, you know, a whereas paragraph, whereas they went to HCZM and blah, blah, and they granted consistency and any, any conditions that were imposed by HCZM are recognized. And even if there aren't any, we just usually put that into our, into our our resolutions as well. Um, but we'll, we have some other changes to make to the resolutions, so we'll, we'll do the resolution separately.
And then, and then since I'm on a roll, I think this was pretty clear, but so there's now no net fill in what, the floodplain? And then the net fill is in another part of the, there's a hundred, the hundred cubic yards is just somewhere else.
Correct, so for the project site area.
Yeah.
So for the entirety of the proposed project, there is going to be about a hundred cubic yards plus or minus.
Yep.
Of imported fill for the project. What is considered to be the floodplain is anything at elevation twelve and below. And within that area, we are not doing. We're not putting any fill, um, and it may adjustments to the plans in order to do that.
Okay, I think that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
You're good? Okay, okay. So this all happened sort of in the last twenty-four hours. Maybe a little more than twenty-four hours where you all, you know, came to a conclusion on a lot of the open issues. Um, and Teresa was uh, kind enough to draft a resolution, uh, you know, quickly um, to put the conditions in, um, and get it. We didn't see the final draft of the resolution until uh, this afternoon sometime. Um, I have some just administrative comments on the resolution and then we have to clarify what conditions go in and what conditions go out. If the board is comfortable with passing the resolution tonight. Everybody's nodding, yeah. Okay, so establish that with proceeds, okay. The list of documents, looks like it was sort of cut and paste uh, from uh, another source. Because the address is in the front of all the documents, um, and some have dates of the document and some and most don't have dates of the document. Um, so I'd like it, I'd like this to be consistent with the way we usually do other. We, we do other uh, resolutions, you know, we, we search the dates of the documents. And I think it's very nice that there's all sorts of KS memos. Uh, but because we have two entities in this planning process that have the initials KS, maybe one. Uh, I think we should say Keller's Sessions, just to clarify, I'm not writing any memos. That's one. On the bottom of page two, there's just spacing typo. Um, on page three, the first whereas, where the planning board meetings of, of the thirteenth of uh, of July. I don't think the, uh, you all were here on the fourteenth of September.
Correct.
So that comes off. And today is not October twenty-fourth, it's October twenty-sixth, so that gets changed. And I mentioned the HCZM boilerplate, uh, whereas paragraph that usually gets popped in. Okay, and then we have for.
Uh, so what, what will that say? Because we haven't seen the resolution or to say that they received a consistency.
That, you know, the planning board is aware that they received consistency on such and such date and any and all conditions imposed by HCZM.
Okay.
You don't negate, whatever it is. Oh, you, yeah, you haven't been around that long.
Well, no, my only question on this point is only, I don't think we should refer to their resolution because we haven't seen.
Yeah, right. Well, we, we just basically, it's, it's basically a broad.
Yeah, as long, as long as it doesn't listed as one of our documents.
We normally see it, but because the timing here was so uh, quick. Um, okay, okay. So then, um, as far as the conditions, uh, the first couple of conditions that are specific, um, where we have prior to the issuance of building permit. So the first one was just regard to the pipe between the discharge at the northern portion of the parking lot um, to the existing catch basin within Laker Avenue. Does that one stay the way it's written here? Is, is that?
Hey Kathy, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I wonder if we're getting ahead of ourselves only because that, that third, that colored sessions whereas also has kind of some discussion that I think is
Okay.
Al- it also maybe needs to be amended. I don't know what order we should address these in, so ignore my interruptions.
No, no, that's okay. You, you picked up things I didn't pick up. Okay, so the third whereas on page, uh, the third whereas on page two after the listed document, right, right.
So the whereas here, I think it's the, I, um, so I mean, maybe we just need to take the minute to be careful here, but number one, the northern portion of the parking lot, et cetera. Um, recommends further coordination.
Continuing issues.
So that is probably okay, and then I think we'll say more about it below, I assume. But then this.
Yeah, that's correct. Alls I'm doing here is reciting the recommendation that John made in his October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two memo. In, in the condition, we pick up what, what the change in terms of what John gave me for that condition number one.
Although, what's your reaction to the last sentence of the whereas? Keller's Sessions directed that the test be reperformed, because now we've heard that that is likely not needed. The test just needs to be sort of validated. So I don't know if it comes out of this whereas and goes into a condition, or if we say that the memo said this, but that in discussion in the meeting, that was, you know, I, I don't think it can stay as is because it's not quite.
No, I, I agree with you. I think we can say Keller's Sessions clarified at the meeting. Um, that the depth below the stormwater practice uh, was correct and will be corrected on the plan.
Or, or that the applicant, you know, stated that that was true, and then later in the condition, I think we'll get to a verification of that, but, yep, okay.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little confused, John, because did you, did you see the test results that showed that there was done correctly? Or are you just hearing what the applicant said and relying on that?
Uh, the the applicant has stated that they, they performed the test and performance with appendix D of the stormwater manual. The problem I had with the test was that it was not performed at a deep enough or a, 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 yeah, deep enough depth. Uh, but the applicant has responded by, by saying that there was a typo. They rechecked the information from the test and that the information that was put on the plan was not the correct depth of the test.
Okay.
They will, they will correct it.
All right, and do you, do you want them to also provide proof by providing the test itself?
I think that would be shown on the, on the drawing.
That's just on the drawing.
They're gonna show the proof by including, including the test information on the plans, which they're s- sealing and, and signing. Testing to it by signing.
And, and, and my, my view would be, and this would make it easy on John as well, but I think we should be as specific as possible. I mean, I don't believe this is something where there's any assessment of the test. I think it should just be that the facts that has, you know, that, that were communicated, were verified. You know, via whatever the acceptable type of stamped, you know, documentation is.
And I'm happy to use whatever language somebody wants to give me. Um, because, you, you know, it's, it's finally parsed. I mean, alls we have in the record is, we have any, uh, a memo from October twenty-first, providing two, two things. Um, one, I'm not really concerned about because clearly in the condition that's been clarified. The problem is in the, in the memo, it said the test should be reperformed. And now we're saying the test does not need to be reperformed, just shown correctly on the plan. Okay?
Correct.
So I'm just gonna say Keller's Session clarified at the planning board meeting on October twenty-sixth that the applicant uh, will correct the plan to show that the test was, that the test depth was appropriate. Okay? And, and meets DEC requirements. Okay, are you all right with that, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it will be fine, it will be clear, but I, I would change, I mean, I think we're saying this. So no need to belabor it, but it's, you know, we're not directing the test. I would, I would say, A, the memo said this, B, during the meeting, that was identified as a um, as an error, and then C, which we can either do here or later, that it would be ver- verified, but I think Teresa, you had good language. I would just definitely get rid of, I think, the directed that the test be reperformed in here because that could be misleading.
No, I, yeah, it's, it, it reads now. Keller's Sessions clarified at the planning board meeting on October twenty-sixth that the applicant will correct the plan to show that the test depth was appropriate and meets DEC requirements.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, great.
And then the rest of that sentence in that whereas clause is about the cut fill volumes. So that needs to stand and it could probably be a separate sentence, you know, also that the cut fill volumes need to be added to plan SP dash two.
Okay, yeah, I'm just gonna, I'll just leave that there and, okay.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, formatting wise, you start numbering one, so I don't know if you're gonna number one, two, and three, or get rid of the one, but it sounds like we're there.
Yeah, that's right. You did, you started numbering one and you didn't carry the number two.
Oh, is that what happened?
The following issues call, says colon one.
And then I, and then I think that cut.
Still one, two, three, and make it clear.
Yeah, and I think the cut fill comment is good as is because the memo actually does say that it was addressed and there's no fill now in the.
Yeah, yeah, that'll work. I'll put in the three and the two and that'll clarify it.
Um, okay, that brings us to the conditions. Um, okay, so is the first condition stand the way it's written? I think it does. Right, condition two changes prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Same language.
The same, the, the, so correct the, uh, resubmit or submit revised plans showing the appropriate depth, right?
So is it, uh, let me ask this question. Is it, is it two things? And if so, let's say them both. One is to revise the plans and two is to provide validation in the typical form that the test was properly um, performed, or is because the plan. Great, great.
So that the applicant shall revise and resubmit the plans.
Shall submit revised plans.
Yeah, submit revised plans. Thank you, editor.
Would you go as far as to say that verifies that the test was properly performed?
No, that corrects the depth, just use the same language. The depth to show that the test depth was appropriate and meets DEC requirements.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay.
That same language. And then we don't need amended site plan approval language.
And then, oh, you can take out the rest of that, yeah.
Stands for the landscaping.
Uh, just, just a, on three, uh, wouldn't we say to, it, it's not to update the cut and fill volumes? Because they're not changing, it's just to present them.
Technically, we're updating it since the last time.
Okay, so it's a different, so, okay, but does that mean other parts of that um, drawing have to, where that plan have to change? Okay. Okay.
You know, if you don't mind me asking, what drawing is gonna be changed to show the corrected, the typo correction on the stormwater? SP two as well, okay.
Condition four, I'm not sure you're going to be submitting a revised land or a plan, but you're going to su- submit a a, a plan which shows the location of the three trees that will be planted unless you, unless you decide to plant them on this parcel. You, it'll be. All right, I see, I, I see Dennis is with us, so I hope you're paying attention to this, Dennis, and you, you understand it. If you don't understand it, because you're all the building departments, if you don't understand it, let us know.
Why, why don't we just say, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall submit re- revised plans, a, a new, a plan showing, how's that?
Okay.
A plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, very good. And then everything else is boilerplate.
Yep.
All right.
So on, um, just, just a general question, we're looking at number one, so you provide a new plan and put some more stuff in there. Uh, i- is there, is there just some standard that nothing else really would change? It's just additive? Is that presumed?
Yes.
Yeah.
They can't make any other changes because the rest of this document approves the site.
As, as, okay, great.
They have to come back for amended site.
Okay, good.
And, and Kathy, I think we should add to eleven. The applicant shall obtain all required state, county, and local permits and approval prior to the issuance of the building permit and shall comply with the HCZM consistency determination and any conditions there too.
Kathleen, if you submit the documents to our office, it will then be passed on to the building. If that's how it ensures it gets there, so before we pass along to building for them to issue the permit, you can give those revisions to us. We'll put it in the pile, then it'll go to building for issuance.
Okay, so that, and I just apologize for being a you guys don't have like a signature title block or equal sign of final version of the plans. The process you're describing is that final submission and.
Yeah, if you get it to us, the resolution will settle this, then I take that resolution, move it on to the building department. I hand them the whole packet. If you give me those plans, it'll make it into that whole packet. That's where they'll see it with the resolution and everything.
Okay, I think so. Are, are we ready for a motion? Okay. Let's make the motion. That we consider this resolution as amended in multiple places over the past, I don't know how long we were discussing this. Okay, Richard moves, makes the motion. Do I need a second?
A second.
Okay, Richard.
Yes.
Ellen, yes.
Yes.
And I will, yes. Okay. You're good to go.
Thank you all very, very much.
You have a few things you have to clean up, but we did get you approved, so you can move forward.
I work in a lot of municipalities, I just say thank you to the board and also thank you to the consultants. Your consultants are very cooperative and they're a very nice team.
They are a nice, this is a very nice team we have here. I know. The end of the year is coming, terms, terms are up. We'll see what happens. Right, okay. Nice. All right, I need a, uh, we will do this by uh, voice vote. We don't need, uh, need a motion. We don't, we want to hold a roll to uh, adjourn the meeting. It's uh, eight thirty-two. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. This is a good team. Really, you know, I enjoy working with you all. Everybody's very professional and gets the job done.
Thank you, everyone.
And if anybody wants to read Barbara King's.